Good evening, everyone. We are now ready to start our last and final information session for potential board candidates for the Little Rock Board of Education. It's been kind of fun getting to talk about this election with our staffs and with our PTAs over the last month. We've tried to make sure that everyone is aware of the fact that we are getting to elect nine, nine people for board seats and telling everyone to really invest time in terms of understanding more about who the candidates are and what your view of the district is and the ideas of what you look at in terms of governance with the Board of Education. Tonight's kind of the final session to just kind of begin, build up additional foundational information for you and it really is gonna have a little bit more of a tinge on some financial, with the exception of maybe our first presentation, which is gonna come from Shemika Montgomery. Before I do that, I want to thank each of you again for your commitment to even pursuing, running for the Board of Education. We're very appreciative of that. Also appreciative of the staff who have helped put together presentations, not only tonight, but in previous sessions. So, we will begin, and the first thing that I will share is just that I appreciate that I have Dr. Owa along as kind of my sidekick through all of our training sessions. Dr. Owa, any words before we introduce Ms. Montgomery?
No, sir. You addressed all of it. Thank you.
Okay. So, our first session is really, first section that we're gonna give you tonight is from Shemika Montgomery. When I came into Little Rock, I, you know, I had a passion about career education and I really wasn't sure exactly what Little Rock was all about in this area, but quickly found that I had a willing partner and a very able partner to expand career opportunities for our young people. Please know that our intent, when we talk about career education, is prepare all students, prepare all students for what their preferred future is, prepare students so that they are ready for life post-secondary, meaning going into higher ed, meaning to go into the workforce, or possibly some combination thereof. We have been excited about a new opportunity called Ford NGL, and we're just looking at it that will really enhance the amount of students that we can help prepare for their preferred future. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Montgomery, who is our Director of Career Education, and I'll let her take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Porch, so much for that introduction. I'm excited to share with the committee about Ford Next Generation Learning and the Academies of Central Arkansas. As Mr. Porch stated, back in 2016-17, I'll give you guys a little background information, our district began to reimagine career and technical education to connect more students to real and relevant project-based learning opportunities that were aligned with growing industries like healthcare and construction. And so, under Mr. Porch's leadership, we developed the Excel program, and it was, it is one of our most innovative CTE programs to date, but we quickly recognized that we needed to expand CTE even further to reach all students. So, we began to study the Ford NGL model in collaboration with all four school districts in the county alongside business, industry, and civic leaders led by the chamber. So, fast forward to today, as a community, we agree that it was time for us to transform the high school experience in Central Arkansas, and we now brand Ford Next Generation Learning as Academies of Central Arkansas. And together as a community, we've created a website where you can go to to find more information about the Academies of Central Arkansas, and if you are on social media, Facebook, Instagram, any of those platforms, you can follow us and see our progress. We have been featured on the local news, Fox 16, and in the, in the newspaper as well. Okay? And so, the Academies of Central Arkansas, it's bringing the benefit of a career-focused high schools to all of our communities, and this is every school within our district, which I feel like is special, every district, every school in our county. And the Academies of Central Arkansas, it's, it's a practice that's built around community-connected approach to education, and we have seen evidence of this practice working through our Excel program where students are re-engaged into learning, they're given the opportunity for project-based learning, and the business community is pumped about this, this partnership because they see the fruits of their labor and putting their resources behind students in our, in our district. So, we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. And so, as a community, we came up with the Portrait of a Graduate. What are those things we want every graduate to know and be able to do upon graduation? We want our students to be able to communicate, collaborate, and lead. We want them to be career and college-ready, and we're not leaving out college because we feel like all of our programs should be tied to post-secondary opportunities and industry certifications. We want our students as a community to develop interpersonal skills where they demonstrate the ability to work effectively and respectfully in diverse teams, and as a community, we want our students to be creative, to be problem solvers, and be able to resolve conflicts in innovative ways. So, that's the portrait of graduates within, that's our vision for graduates within the Little Rock School District. To date, I mean, we've been working so hard to develop our career pathways, and since we're working, we're partnered with the other districts within our county, we're sharing professional development opportunities. Like this summer, everybody in the region participated in freshman seminar training, and within that freshman seminar course, that's a course that every ninth grader will take, that they, that they learn, they're in small learning, a small learning community, they learn how to cope moving from middle school to high school, and they learn about all the career pathways that are available within our district. And so, all freshmen will take that course. We have hired academy coaches for two of our schools, and we have one that's shared between Parkview and Central, but academy coaches are meeting weekly with the, with the chamber to plan a regional career exposure fair for our freshmen that will take place virtually this year in December, and the Little Rock Southwest High School team is a little further, they've implemented freshman teaming where our freshman students are in smaller learning communities, working with the same core teacher to help them grow and develop and, and just support them in their needs. So, in short, we're excited about Ford NGL, Academies of Central Arkansas, and we look forward to working with whomever wins the election and moving this initiative forward, because it's going to take all of us to make this program successful. Are there any questions?
Before we open it up to questions, I just want to add a couple comments and then the individuals that are running for the board, you can either present your question as a chat, or we'll put this onto a screenshot so we can see everybody, and that way it'll be easier for me to open it up to questions that you may have. This opportunity really provides real and relevant learning for all of our, our students, and that's exciting to me because, you know, when you think about kids, you know, being excited in high school and wanting to be engaged, we've gotta turn it back to them to let them explore their own passions. They don't want to sit and just get information, they want to go do, and, and that's what we're trying to create. I'm excited that it's not just the four school districts, it's every chamber in this region, it's every city within this region, and then there have been stakeholders that are community leaders that I think at one time exceeded 150 individuals that were all helping plan and create even like kind of that vision of what a graduate would look like. One last thing that I'll share is that, you know, obviously this takes some resources, the business community has stepping up. So, as an example, you know, medical is so big in our community, think about this, we could have a medical career academy within each of the high schools potentially, but they would all have kind of their own unique bent, and then the hospitals themselves would take turns of who they might support. And the positive about doing this within all of Central Arkansas is we no longer compete as districts, we're all working together, and one final thing about how resources would come in, besides the business environment, is the governor, and he has not made this as a formal announcement, but it is being shared publicly that he will provide matching funds. So, some point that, that total dollar amount will be shared, and that's gonna mean an awesome opportunity. So, if you think about a business investing $20,000, and then in theory it could double to $40,000, that would come into that school for that career program. So, we are gearing all of the, the career academies towards what the needs of the business community is so that there are real relevant jobs for people and that they fit our higher ed programs as well, whether it's Pulaski Tech, or UA Little Rock, Central Arkansas, U of A, you know, all of our universities within the system. So, it really is a wonderful opportunity. So, with that, I do see one comment on a chat, actually that's Dr. Owa sharing that we will have this presentation to you tomorrow morning. Notice that there, I mentioned that there are links that are live, so you can go click on the Fox TV story or learn more about Ford NGL. Dr. Van Ding had shared that how are mentors chosen for each student and are mentors paid for their time? Would you like to address that, Ms. Montgomery?
Sure. Well, mentors are not paid, I'll answer that question, and how they are chosen, students are, will choose an academy, and then when they get to the, the third level course, they'll, they'll do what we call a capstone project, and during that capstone experience, based on whatever their project is, we'll reach out, the academy coach will reach out to business and industry, our business and industry partners to help find a mentor to mentor that student through that project.
Next question, Ms. Montgomery, is will career, particularly college opportunities, be spread equally between all the schools?
Yes. The great thing about this initiative is that each school will have three to four academies and for, for parents and students to choose, and this all means all. All of our students will be involved or enrolled in a career academy of their choice. Through the freshman seminar class, we will educate students on all of the academies that's available within their school and within our district, and then at the end of that ninth grade year, they can select, hey, I want aerospace engineering at Southwest High School, or I may want, if we create a cybersecurity program at Central High School, they may choose that, that path. So, yes, this is, this is, this is great for all students.
And I'll also add on to that, and I, I know, Mr. Davis, your, your heart of pride is in equity, and that equity will be in both programs that you would view more like people getting ready to be doctors to also opportunities for people that may want to use their, their hands and, and get more into welding, and, and it's not gonna be just one high school that is geared towards doing programs that, that go right into work readiness. All of them will, but also all of them will have that higher ed capacity to take them into really some upper-level type training programs. A good question about middle school, and I know, Ms. Montgomery, could you share a little bit about how we try to engage our middle school students, and I think that was coming in, I, I can't tell who that one's from.
Okay. Middle school students currently take a course called professional, uh, career development, and within career development, they will be exposed to the career academies, and they actually start to create their career action plan. And, and also during that eighth grade year, we have what we call a, a career planning system called Naviance, where students get to dive into what their career interests are, what are their strengths, to help, it's a computer program to help them make decisions about their future. We're moving away from students just picking, choosing electives from across the board, we want our students to be trained in the mindset of creating a major. What's my major while I'm in high school, and what can I, what, what can be my career focus so to help lead me to a successful career and have, in turn, have a successful life?
And that really flows into the next question that I saw Mr. Mackey present, which is, you know, if you're, if you're not in your zone, a program's not in your zone high school, what happens? And, and really, we have to look at it not just in your zone high school, but it's even out of the zone, possibly in another district. Ms. Montgomery, you want to share more?
Yes. Through the freshman seminar opportunity, uh, class, again, students will be educated about all of our pathways, and they'll be able to make that decision whether or not they want to, to choose an academy at a different school. And the great thing about Little Rock is that all of our schools are, are magnets, so you can apply and go to any one of those. So, I mean, we're excited about the opportunities that Academies of Central Arkansas will offer all of our students. It's an opportunity, we're, we're opening up career education for all, and we're letting parents and students make their own decisions about their future.
It, it really does create a, within Little Rock school system, because of the magnet concept that we already have, we're better suited probably as a large district to handle the transportation. We did model this off of Ford NGL, really got it started in Nashville school system, and I will share that in Nashville, they went, they had a much dire situation than we have. They were at 58% graduation rate at the time they started this program. They're now over 84%. Their gang member age was at 15, and now the average age of a gang member is 22, which tells you that young people now are, are finding something to get themselves invested in. And Nashville, of course, has, you know, an urban, inner-city type school system just like us. The next question that I see is from Mr. Kingsby, asking about how this compares to Metro, or what happens to Metro? I'll, I'll add to his question, Ms. Montgomery, because it's not just about how does it compare, but it's also what happens to Metro as we move forward with this type of programming?
Well, this, this opens up Metro because we're, we're allowing students to choose early what pathway they want to choose, and how this differs from Metro is that the core academic teachers will teach through the lens of a career. So, we're connecting core academics and career studies together, and based on the data that we've seen in Nashville, students tend to improve, their GPA improved, their attendance improves because they now can see the importance or the relevance in that, in, in geometry because they're taking a, they're in the CAD program or they're in construction at Metro. So, we see this as a win-win for students and, and for Metropolitan, and it does, it is different because we're merging core academics with career.
One of the final thing I'll mention about Metropolitan is that, you know, as an example, it has an automotive shop at Metropolitan. We can't go replicate that. If we're trying to put in an automotive shop, which is a need within our community and pays extremely well, a top mechanic can earn over $70,000. We can't replicate that within our existing building, so we are gonna have to have the kids matriculate for that junior, senior year, their capstone-type projects towards Metropolitan, but we then want to tie it towards having a, a business tied more towards that automotive shop at Metropolitan. So, in, in Nashville, they actually have a Firestone that the kids are helping run out of Metro, which then creates a funding model as well to keep the program sustainable with new equipment. You can tell we're, we're, Ms. Montgomery and I, we are fired up about this, okay? And, and the good thing is, we think that our community is as well. We know that you will probably continue to learn about this and have additional questions. Please don't hesitate to reach back out to Ms. Montgomery or myself. I do see another question came in from Michael Sanders that says, how does this go along or enhance the work that had begun with Career Quest? And I'm unfamiliar with the term Career Quest, and Michael, I may have forgot, Mr. Sanders, I may have forgotten what that meant.
The Career Quest is a partnership between our district, Tindaji CDC, and the City of Little Rock, where we host like a career fair every year, and this year, we're, we're hosting a, a virtual career exposure fair for ninth graders, but we're looking at hosting a job fair slash career fair for seniors in February. So, Mr. Sanders, I will be calling on you to help us with that event moving forward. So, this wouldn't change what we, what we've done, it'll just enhance our Career Quest in the future.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna use that pause to, to shift this off of this topic, otherwise, Ms. Montgomery and I would hog the rest of the session and just keep going because we, we are passionate about this because we can see a brighter future for our young people, and I'm really appreciative again of Ms. Montgomery, but also want to thank all of the community partners who've already been involved in, in putting this together. The next topic deals with our, our budget and sharing about fiscal governance and, and your role that will become a part of it. So, this is a unique environment that you're all stepping into because we approve our budgets in September, and then we know that you all are getting elected in the month of November, and you're inheriting this, this particular budget. One of the things that you'll find about school finance, and I think we've shared this before, is it's, it's complicated, and it's not easy to grasp all the nuances of it, but we have an excellent CFO in Kelsey Bailey, who really does a good job of kind of breaking everything apart so that you can in particular monitor what's most important in terms of utilization of our resources. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bailey right now and let him lead us through this part of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and Dr. Owa, I'm gonna let you drive this, so I'll, I'll switch over and try to grab my things, minute, they know I like to drive, so it's a milestone. But one, uh, so our budget, it is a complicated, it's a big budget, over $300 million, but we're gonna try to break it down in layman's terms. You won't get to, I guess, a good, probably good understanding until you've really been into the budget process probably a couple of years, but our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. As Mr. Porch said, we actually get our budget, has to be approved no later than September 30th of every year, so we typically don't approve it till September, although the fiscal year started July 1st. Some of the things that we want to make sure, we have to wait on what's called a state aid notice, which that's official notice, and it typically comes out at the end of July letting you know where the official assessment is and some of your state categorical funding, and typically right after that, we have some federal funding notifications that come either late July or early August. So, we want to make sure we have those numbers correct before we actually start actually going through and actively proposing a budget out there. We start the budget process, it never really stops with the district because we're constantly monitoring. But here are some budgetary factors that we, as a, a district, we have to really look at, so we want to make sure we're looking at, of course, our previous year fiscal year results, and typically I'm looking at about a five, three to five-year or so. We want to look at enrollment projections and current student count, so we are service-oriented, I'm gonna just say business, because we provide a service out there, and it's, most of our actual expenses are tied up in salaries and personnel, so enrollment projection and current student counts are very important as we go about staff and our locations. Current and future economic condition tax assessment, so the majority, and we'll see this a little bit later in the presentation, the majority of our, our, our funding comes from taxpayers, so through real estate, through our personal property, taxes there, and I have highlighted on here appeals as well, so there are some tax assessments that are appealed, but with COVID and everything, it's, 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 we're really projecting on a conservative basis, our tax collections came in about $4 million or less at the end of the year last year that we actually projected. So, in this upcoming budget, the current budget, we have taken a very conservative approach on this actual collection. Typically, we collect anywhere between 98 to 90, 96 to 98% of our, our tax, taxes out there. This past year, roughly about 95%. School structures, staffing needs, of course, there, and there additional staffing needs or, you know, consolidation, closing, or adding schools and different things like that, school improvement requirements or initiatives also. When we're looking at employee salaries and benefits, like I said, that takes up the majority of actually our budget, and it's where our majority of our expenditures are. But things for this year that we had to look at, minimum wage, it's gone up a couple times, so effective 1121, the minimum wage is gonna be $11, so we'll have to make a mid-year adjustment on those, those classifications that are below the $11 range. Right now, we're at $10. HTR, RAS is Arkansas Teacher Retirement System. Legislators voted, I believe, two years ago to have a quarter percent increase over the next four years, so this is a portion that we pay on all wages out there. So, for this year, it went from 14.25 up to 14 and a half percent. So, you're looking at our, our salaries, that's a significant amount, but other initiatives we look at, you know, either board directive initiatives, superintendent, department administrators, and different things that may come about, and COVID-19 is a big one as well. So, we have the PPE, it really just, you'll go back one, moved too fast, I mean, the COVID-19 is a big one because we, we have to make, taking consideration of the tax collections and any future expenses that we hadn't actually experienced before. So, I actually did a budget presentation, and it was all uncharted for us, this is all uncharted for us, not the budget process, but not knowing what COVID-19 is gonna bring, especially as we have entered into the fall and the winter, when the flu and everything else hit. So, there may be some additional expenses we have to bear, so next one, please, Dr. Owa. These other budgetary factors, state standard, staffing formula, you hear us talking about that, schools are allocated resources based on a staffing standard. If you go beyond that staffing standard, you risk to, you have a risk of spending more money than you actually have funding coming in, so we, we try to stay as closer to those state standards as possible. Textbook adoption is our major, so last year, we had, I think, literacy had the major adoption, but we spent, it was a record high, I've been here 11 years, so we spent almost $4.5 million. Typically, textbook adoption runs about a million and a half to $2 million, so if we have major adoption, we have to take those into consideration. Child nutrition, that's a big program here, about $14 million program. You hear us talk about provision two, basically that's all students in a provision two school, eat at no cost to the actual students, so most likely they typically have a 70% of grade or free and reduced population at that school, so the district actually takes on the cost of any of those students that would typically have been paid, but I mean, every student at that school actually has breakfast and lunch at no cost, and part of that's funded through what's called ESA, and I believe Dr. Kizik will hit a little bit on there, but we had feeding programs that, that continued to go on, our child nutrition workers never did stop working even when we were out on birth control from March, we continued to feed the students throughout the community. So, we have several programs still going with COVID-19. Facility improvements, this is a big one as well, so this is something that's on your actual ballot for those of running, so bond refunding and debt service meal extension, so what we're asking voters to do, and I have a just a fact page as well, so the district is, we assess based on 46.4 meals out there, we have 32 meals that are dedicated for maintenance operation, and 12.4 meals dedicated for debt service, and basically this goes to pay for any debt service that we have outstanding, and any extra can actually go for your operations, but what we're asking our voters to do is actually extend our debt service meals out 18 years, so from 2033 to 2051. This allows us to actually refund or refinance two of our bond issues at a lower rate, and actually raise upwards of about $200 million to go toward facility improvements. Another big one we had, of course, is Little Rock Southwest High School opening. Amazing building, a little over $103 million for actual construction, so if you hadn't been out there, I suggest if you can get a tour, take it, it's amazing. I mean, I was blown away, I don't think you'll see another school in the state like it, but other legislative acts, you can kind of see the minimum wage like we talked about. Beginning teacher salaries, we raised them to $36,000 last year, so we're at that mark in background checks. So, this is basically, if you're not familiar with how property is actually assessed in the, in the state, so property is assessed at 20% of its market value as stated by the assessor's office, so we're always a year behind on taxes in Arkansas, so our current taxes being collected in 2020 is from 2019 assessment, so Little Rock assessment is getting close to $4 billion, so it's a, almost a three, it's a three and a quarter percent increase from the previous year, and you can see the breakdown on how that actually equates there, so 2.9 comes out of real estate, another 700, 770 million coming out of personal property and a utility property right behind it. And basically, when we're talking about a meal, what does a meal equal? A meal is basically 1/10th of 1 cent, so if you take the assessed value and you want to see what one meal actually produce, you would multiply it times .001. So, the, um, the example here, if you notice, if you had 100,000 So the, um, example here, if you notice, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, uh, be assessed at twenty percent of that, so your assessed value would be twenty thousand. Uh, twenty thousand, uh, times one meal would be twenty dollars. So you pay twenty dollars that would go toward Little Rock School District. Of course, you, you have more millet that goes toward other entities, but Little Rock would actually get twenty dollars out of that. So taxes leveled on a hundred thousand dollar house with the forty-six point four meals, you'd be paying, uh, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars that would go to find a Little Rock School District. So pretty much in a perfect environment, uh, forty-six point four meals times our assessed value produces about three point nine million. That's at a hundred percent collection. We typically don't have that, you have to knock it down a couple of percent, probably to ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent collection. But here's the kind of the breakdown, if you notice here, what I talked about earlier, the thirty-two meals goes for maintenance operation. That's all our salaries and benefits and utilities and things like that. We have twelve point four meals, of course, like I said, that goes toward our debt service payments. And we have two meals that are called dedicated maintenance operation. And one meal goes toward refreshing our technology and one meal goes toward capital outlay. That pretty much makes up our military. So as we, as we look through our budget a little bit later, so this is what our local revenue is broken out and we account for our, our taxes in various buckets here. So current taxes, we collect from July first through December thirty-first every year. Uh, it is put in a different account code, but this is what we're projecting for this up, this fiscal year. I'm saying upcoming year, but this fiscal year, we're currently in right now, eighty-seven point five million and toward January first through June thirtieth, uh, sixty-five million. And then this is probably about four to five million dollars under what we typically project based on, you know, our appreciation based on this COVID. We, I'm just thinking that we, we thought that, you know, collection is probably gonna come in less than what's been expected in the past. Uh, with the current financial situation, many families and businesses out there, they may elect to make payroll instead of paying your property taxes. We eventually will get those property taxes, they just may become delinquent. So we're just, we're taking a conservative approach on, on, on this year, uh, projection. So delinquent taxes, you can kind of see below there, and you all have, just make some notes if you have any questions. We'll try to address those, uh, but makes up pretty much our local revenue. Next slide, please. Uh, state revenue, and I won't cover this in detail too much. Uh, I know Dr. McKissick's gonna cover many of these state categorical funds, but what we're projecting for state revenue for this year is eighty-two million. And the majority of this comes what's called state foundation funding. And this funding is based on your current, your, not your current enrollment, but your enrollment. It's called average daily membership, you hear say A D M. So basically, what the state looks at the first three quarters and looks at your enrollment and gets an average there, and it's based on the previous year. And there's a factor that's, uh, based on the foundation funding amount, it's times that A D M and you actually get that. Am I still clear, am I coming through okay? Okay, sometime I have some connection issues, but, uh, in state grants and ma- magnet funding, we have some various grants that we get that are state-funded, uh, and ninety-eight percent collection, a ninety-eight percent uniform tax of funding. If we collect less than ninety-eight percent on our first twenty-five meals, the state makes up the difference. And that's what they do for all districts. So all districts are guaranteed to at least collect, uh, ninety-eight percent of their twenty-five meals. And you notice I, we have forty-six point four meals, so the collections come in less than ninety-eight percent. Beyond that twenty-five meals is on the districts at that point, so. And there are some other special funding that we've got in the past because we've had some declining enrollment over the past year. So what we're projecting this year, based on our state aid notice, is a little over six hundred thousand coming in. And you can see the other, the other, uh, titles down here, A L E, Alternative Learning Environment, E L L, those are all what's called state categorical funding. I believe Dr. McKissick will cover those a little bit later, so I won't go into much detail on those. Uh, this is a foundation funding I talked about, and you can see this year's foundation funding amount is seven thousand eighteen dollars of state aid per student, uh, three-quarter average for Little Rock. Right here on A D M is, uh, twenty-one thousand three eight, three oh eight. This doesn't include pre-K, they don't fund pre-K on this funding source, so there's other funding, A B C funding for pre-K. So that's how we got up to the fifty-two million. So you can see some other breakdown there for our state categorical funding. Can I, can I grab a screen? Or, I guess you can click on that roadmap too, Dr. Owa. Will it hyper? I'm gonna share, I'm gonna share. Okay. I'm gonna grab a couple of things here as well, so. This is one thing on here, are y'all good on my screen, you see it okay? All right, good deal. So I developed this, it's called a budget roadmap, it has some narrative out here. We look at a lot of numbers and for accountants and different things like me, and I look at Excel spreadsheets all day, and they make perfect sense, but for those that may not be looking at this, there's some narratives out here for you to kind of get some explanation, I'm just gonna scroll through this. This is just a budgetary focus and goal. But it's gonna show you some different sources of funds, how those things are broken out. So we're, the district, about twenty-three thousand students and about, uh, thirty-three hundred employees. And this shows you how the breakdown of our local, state, federal, and other funds are based on percentages there. Uh, this, and yeah, spare time, read through it, it gives it some other things about our local funding, how they're generating the things, the things I just talked about as far as, uh, the assessed values as well. I'm gonna go to the, the end as well, so this is something important when we, we have to talk about budget reductions typically. Uh, these are some of the criteria that we kind of used in the past as we talk about different budget reduction needed. So in some of these things, of course, loss of DSEC funding, that was something we had a few years ago. We're, we're pretty much winged off that now, but these are just some, some items, some bullet points as we talking. And we'll have different work sessions during budget time. So typically, we have two to three work sessions with the board before actual approval of the budget, or anytime there's a request, and we have monthly, monthly updates as well. There was also a link out there as well, this is what's called our, our budget package. So it's online as well, so this shows a summary of everything I just covered there. So if you were looking at those current taxes in our local, you see we have a hundred and sixty-eight million uh, actually projected for our local income, and state sources, eighty-two million. Uh, this number is, is, uh, looks a little bit confusing here because we have to actually account for what's called interfund transfer. So we transfer what's called from a fund one, which is a teacher fund to a general operating fund, we have to actually account for that. But you could pretty much take this bottom line here minus the transfers and get what our actual overall budget is. So, but we have to show the transfers on, on our documents as well. So this showed our federal revenue, that we projected about forty-four million and, of course, our dedicated operations. The next page is gonna give you a highlight of our expenses, a summary of our expenses. And like I said, you can see salaries up here, take up a hundred, and benefits take up almost a hundred and ninety million dollars. Right at a hundred and ninety million dollars, we have another big transfer there. But if you look at the other categories here, they're fairly small here, with the exception of this transfer, with those are the interfund transfers again. So our debt service payments are a little over twenty-one million dollars. So as you scroll down to the bottom, it actually shows you what's called a fund balance. And basically, your fund balance is the difference between your revenue versus expenses. So if you have more revenue than you have expenses in a given year, you add to your fund balance. If you have more expenses than you have revenue, you take away from your fund balance. This fund balance is basically, I'll say, it's a cushion for you. So you typically want to have minimal of five percent, but I typically suggest about ten percent because all these federal revenues that we, uh, showed right here, these are all on a reimbursable basis. So you want to have enough money for cash flow during those times when you're waiting on those sudden reimbursements or, uh, when you're waiting on actual tax payments to come in, so. But this is online too, and I know it's linked out there too. Uh, we won't cover this too much in detail, but these are the detailed reports that you actually get on a monthly basis. Uh, we're still working on a software piece, it's gonna give a little more pictorial view, but these are, I mean, the total, all our, uh, accounts that we have to look at. And you can see this is a revenue piece here. I'm gonna scroll through this kind of slowly, and we have a lot of different revenue sources that come in. Still on revenue, let's keep scrolling, still revenue pieces here. Then you'll get to the four pages and the actual breakdown on all the expenses that's associated with the district as well, and have the year-to-date budget over here. Hopefully, I hadn't bored you too much so far. I'm gonna jump on one more other thing because we did cover it earlier because I told you this was actually on, on the ballot. So this is one, we have just the facts out there, kind of showing you a historical. Last vote that we had, the, uh, that the voters approved was in nineteen ninety-nine. That was an actually increase of a millet. So we had two thousand and fourteen Fannie Howard study that we, uh, contracted with facility consultants, and they identified over three hundred million dollar of needs. That was in two thousand and fourteen, those needs never went away, but, uh, when we actually went before voters in two thousand and seventeen, our, our initiative failed, but we are still able to do what's called a second lien loan. But we actually got ninety-two million dollars in. So the majority of that went, uh, toward, uh, different air conditioning roofs, HVAC. We actually put air conditioning in kitchens that we didn't have air conditioning in our kitchen, air conditioning in our gyms, uh, and helped finish out the Southwest High School. So, and these are just some recommended projects. Only project that I know we are obligated to do on there is actually rebuild a McClellan campus and move Cloverdale over from that campus, and that was part of our lawsuit settlement agreement, so. But we've done about thirteen million dollars of, uh, uh, like LED lighting and energy, uh, projects out there. And we save probably about two million dollars on actually utility usage based on that thirteen million dollar investment we made as well, so. I'm not sure where I'm at on time, am I?
Can I jump in, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll start on this slide and then, uh, I, I, maybe we can move more towards questions here in just a few minutes. But, um, the, uh, on this slide, one of the things, Mr. Dr. Owa and I had a meeting with the commissioner, uh, this week, and it kind of came right after the John Grummet article. I want all of you as potential board members to understand that the commissioner totally views the prioritization of what, what projects this district chooses to move forward on as being a responsibility of the Little Rock School Board all on its own. That there are no interference, there's no getting a second approval from him. This will fall on your laps. Now, that's both positive and, and you also will quickly learn the pressures that come from different constituencies hoping and seeking to have projects. So the superintendent recommended list of projects that you see right there. A part of why we were maybe more vague than many would like is that we did not want to get ahead of you because truly this will be your responsibility. As Mr. Bailey shared, the one thing that you can't mess with is to rebuild McClellan. If we rebuild McClellan, you know, takes our worst campus in terms of a physical building in Cloverdale out so that we can, uh, move it and, and, and move the kids into a newly rebuilt McClellan. It also is a part of our blueprint that we've worked on for the last two years, would move multiple elementary campuses into the new McClellan, which would ultimately shrink our footprint and save additional resources there. After that, you know, you're seeing there's a set of recommendations. Mr. Bailey and I will tell you that, uh, you know, there's nothing real fancy here, uh, that in, in our, our, our thoughts of what needs to happen, because we need to improve learning environments, we need to create healthier environments, and we've got to be able to compete against districts that are surrounding us. There's a question that came in from Ms. Wilson, uh, on this very topic about the Fannie Howie study. And Mr. Bailey, is it possible for us to provide a link to that study, uh, through Dr. Owa tomorrow?
Yes, I think, I think it's still live, I'll, I'll find it, I think it's still on our website. I know I have executive summary, it's a pretty, pretty thick summary, a pretty thick, uh, document, so.
Yeah, just, if we gave you the whole thing, it's like a notebook that's five inches thick. So, uh, you'll be able to choose how much depth you want to go into on that. Um, and remember that Fannie Howie, uh, study was done in, uh, two thousand and fourteen, I think is when it was completed. That was with the local board. And obviously, some of the construction costs and thoughts at that time, things have changed, uh, there's, there are things that are more expensive, uh, just point, point blank. So if we could, Mr. Bailey, I'm gonna shift this towards questions in more of a general sense, and we'll try to treat this board members kind of like we did, uh, on the Ford N G L that you could put into the chat, and I will make sure to bring them up. But I'm also gonna bring up some questions out of Mr. Bailey's presentation that I think would be helpful. First off, uh, you know, our budget i- is, is driven by staff in terms of how much cost that, that it brings on. Can you give just a general idea of the percentages of what it takes out of our budget just for the number of people that we employ?
It's typically about seventy-five percent goes towards staff.
So one of the things that sometimes your constituents will say is, you've really got to do something with the budget. You gotta remember that seventy-five percent of our costs come from our employees. Now, many of you also will get a lot of feedback about, we need to do more to attract and retain staff. And they're absolutely right when anybody says those things. But we also need to kind of point out that we have some inequities within our salary structures. Can you cover those, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I, I know we're doing a salary study as well right now, so everybody's actually gone through that process. So we should have that completed, I think, in the next month or so.
And that salary study just is for, it's everybody but teachers, we can't.
Teachers, yeah.
But you share where we're at on the teacher salary too, or do you want me to do that?
So on the teachers, we actually have, uh, we had a proposal, look at getting them up to, I think, forty-one thousand. Uh, that was probably a year and a half ago. Uh, we just recently got the minimum up to thirty-six thousand, which costs about two point six million. So the governor actually had some funding for last year, and it's up to the district this year to actually fund that. So, uh, we just have to look at different lanes as far as experience lanes and what we do. So typically, between every experienced step, you know, the teacher salary and regular classified salaries, about a three percent increase until they actually, what's called stepped out. So, uh, most steps have anywhere from fifteen, uh, from ten to twenty active steps, so.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, then I'll, well, I'll go into one more bit of depth on that. If you look at the employees that are in the, uh, the beginning part of their career and zero to eight, that's where we rank the lowest in terms of state rankings. We rank somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred, depending upon what year that is, so they can vary with each year just a little bit. If you go into employees that are in the middle of their career out to when they're at the, the end of their career, so fifteen to twenty-five or thirty-year employees, that, in that area, we're all in the top ten for the most part. Uh, and we are preparing a, a presentation for the community advisory board on that very thing, uh, for November. Then you all will see, and it's, it'll be a good tool for you to look at as well. The, uh, you know, it, it's very important that we, that people could trust us in terms of how we use our resources. Mr. Bailey, could you just give a real quick overview of what an audit means and how that fits in with the, a board of education?
And we do have a question down there as well. So every year, so up to two thousand and fifteen, we had independent audit. Uh, we were suggested to go to a legislative audit, which we've gone to. So, uh, typically legislative auditors get here and will start monitoring our information about October. Uh, typically wrap up anywhere from January through, uh, February, somewhere in that timeframe. We typically have had pretty good audits, uh, audit issues that we found based on employees may not be doing the right thing at times. So we, we're gonna have some theft or something, and that's only, really the only findings we've had over the last few years. So we prosecuted those employees when we find out about it. We have a lot of internal controls in it, into the system. Uh, I think we have a pretty good solid system, we have multiple levels of, of people reviewing documents. But at certain times, you know, you have thirty-three, thirty-four hundred employees, one, two of them typically gonna do something wrong. And that's just in, in, in an organization. One of the things that's important, just go back where you were on, on, as far as the bond refunding. We've refunded probably about seven issues over the past ten years and saved the district about close to thirty million dollars, which we've put back into facilities based on, you know, interest rates being low. But this gives the board an opportunity to come in and actually have money to operate, uh, as far as facility and prioritize, so you're not being bombarded by roofs and stuff. When I got here in two thousand and nine, that was a big thing with the board, uh, in buildings. We had roofs that were leaking and different other things. And we pretty much alleviate those complaints for the most part with our money that came in two thousand and nine. Ten, that helped out some, and, and with the money we got from the second lien. So we, warm, safe, and dry, you're here, that's our, the main priority for facilities, keep the buildings warm, safe, and dry. And then you can start enhancing from those ones.
Mr. Bailey, you did correctly state that, uh, some other questions have popped up. Uh, Mr. Sanders is asking about, uh, the staff capacity that we're currently operating and, and how many vacancies do we have? And I'll start if you don't mind with that question. One of the things on the vacancies is that our most hard-to-fill positions, uh, are within special, uh, education. our most hard-to-fill positions are within special education. We have the hardest time finding employees, and we do have still some vacancies within those positions. I ran into one today, as a matter of fact, in Fulbright, where we're having to do some unique teaming to offset the fact that we are short one certified staff member. So we're surviving it, but we're not in an ideal situation there. We you're gonna hear me bring up another question in just a minute that's gonna fit into this whole vacancy thing of moving forward in terms of challenges to our budget. But you know, right now, we're we're stacked pretty appropriately, and I'll let Mr. Bailey add to that that question or that answer.
Right now vacancies, I ran it this afternoon. I believe we had about eighty-eighty-seven, I think, vacancies were out there, but the majority of those are like for custodial and security officers. We have quite a bit of turnover. We have some child nutrition, a few bus drivers, very few classified. We had some spared positions I saw out there, a few spared teachers, I think a few spared aides. Along, but typically, we we run about seventy to a hundred vacancies at any given time. And and more so this year because of COVID. It's just hard. People are not willing to especially in the security officer ranks and the custodians, it's just been hard to actually find person.
And I'm gonna come back to staffing in just a minute, but I do want to answer Ms. Callaway's question. It said, what schools will be closed or repurposed? And she mentioned just zone three, but I I'll broaden that question just a little bit. You know, in 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 plan or what's been approved right now is that next year we will be moving students to JA Fair. Now, we we folks, we've got to do that because if we don't move folks into JA Fair and we don't have utilization of that campus, then charters can't come in and grab that campus. So we want to have it's a good campus, and we want to move towards a K eight. There will be a presentation provided about the the JA, you know, complex and how we're bringing all the different groups together as well as repurposing then of the campuses that would close. The campuses that would close and move to JA Fair are Henderson, Dodd and Romine. When you go look at the south end, the southwest end, and you start to think about rebuilding McClellan, the current blueprint, and this one could be changed by all of you, and it could be in discussion format. Cloverdale, that's that's just a no starter, more or less. You've got to move Cloverdale over to McClellan. But the elementaries, the the blueprint proposed closing Meadow Cliff and then also closing baseline and then repurposing specifically baseline into a new pre-K delivery. So I hope that answers your question, Ms. Callaway. Now, I want to jump into one more thing that that's kind of unique that happened. Mr. Bailey and I serve on several state committees to to discuss things with fellow CFOs and and also superintendents. And Tuesday, there was great news that came out of our state legislative group. And it hasn't been finalized yet, but for the first time, they changed the funding model in a very significant way. Maybe I shouldn't say first time. They just made bigger adjustments than they ever have. And going clear back to the Lakeview lawsuit, this will be the largest increase in terms of adequacy resources towards the school districts. And this was in an article on Wednesday. And Dr. Oa, I know that I had that article shot out to cabinet. Maybe we could share that with the board members perspective, board members, just in case they didn't see it. So let's get that to them. But it it's really positive news what occurred there. Now, the of course, this is life in a school district for both superintendents and board members is right after we had that positive news, Mr. Bailey and I got to hear two different things that were kind of almost slaps in our face and and challenges. One is the box store, or you could call it dark store concept. And Ms. Nolan brought that question up. That is a a lawsuit that is emerging through the court system. The Little Rock School District and our fellow school districts in the county all tried to become a partner to the lawsuit and were denied by the courts. So the county is in a lawsuit with the Walmart. And Walmart is saying that basically they believe they are being taxed or assessed inappropriately for their facilities in this county. Please understand that Walmart is also doing this in other states. And in Colorado, in fact, they did it in a blanket. So my old state, they're doing it all over the state, challenging the assessment rate. Here in Arkansas, they just challenged it in Pulaski County. This impacts more than just the school district. If the assessment rate changes, it impacts the school, the school district, it impacts the county. It impacts a small little number with the city fire and police. It impacts the Central Arkansas Library System, and it also impacts the Children's Hospital. So it has a wide range effect. The bigger effect, though, is that if Walmart is successful in this view of trying to change their property assessment, the box store concept would probably leak out to other groups who would also seek an adjustment, which would be Kroger, Target, even places like Sonic. And so this is a very, very big deal. It probably won't play out for us for we really won't know the realities of it, maybe even for two years, because it's gonna go through every level of the court system before it's decided. In addition, here's worse news. So we all try to be real with you. Our enrollment numbers are significantly down this year. If you look at it at the high school level, and I'm talking in generalities right now, and and obviously, this isn't our exact count yet, but it's a it's an indicator of where we stand at this moment. The actual count has been moved back. Normally, we know that in October one. All that that's been delayed because of the pandemic, and the final count won't be determined till the middle of October. But right now, we are down in in both K twelve and in pre-K. So in the K twelve world, we really only have a a minor loss. And, Mr. Bailey, correct me if I stumble anywhere, but we're we're only down a a small amount of students at the high school level. We actually are up in students at the middle school level as a whole, six through eight. Where we are down is at the elementary level. And this is a shocking number. We're down seven hundred and seventy-five students at the K five level. A majority of those are at the kindergarten group and the first grade group, and I think the third group is probably third grade in terms of a a loss of enrollment. I can't tell you right now what happened to those students. Some of them may have gone to charter. Some may have gone to homeschool. And some, we may just not even have a a notion yet that they just haven't engaged at all. We are not alone in this. So talking to Springdale, their K five is down five hundred. You've got districts like Jonesboro, West Memphis. Everybody is all in the same place on this in terms of loss of students. And I'll give one more last number is we have a loss of students also at the pre-K level. And that pre-K number, we're down over eight hundred students at the pre-K level. And of course, we worry about that because that's preparation for kids to become ready for kindergarten. And it also is kindergarten students. So we are we are actively working on reaching out. And we've been working hard with both school staff, district staff, on trying to engage families to make sure they're they're coming back or they're with us. But I want you to understand that, you know, you could be a board member, you you're gonna always hear real from us and be transparent. And that is a challenge. Mr. Bailey, anything to add to my comment?
No, I think you pretty much captured it. We've been dealing with challenges. We'll get a little while with DSA going away. So we used to budget reductions around here if 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 they're needed, but weren't expecting that much of a drop. So I know cycle two is scheduled to go in deadlines October fifteenth. And I know they're working through getting everything cleaned up. So we'll have actual numbers as far as our October first official enrollment date.
Could you give one more thing, Mr. Bailey, in that I want board members to understand that October fifteenth isn't just the one thing that determines your budget? Can you can you share?
Yeah. So you have you have initial, what's called October first actual enrollment. So it just gives you what your enrollment is for that snapshot. But they look at the first three quarters of the year. So the first, second and third quarter actually do it's called average daily membership. So all the students you had enrolled, each one of those quarters is average. And I kind of showed it to you on that, I think, twenty-one thousand three oh eight. That didn't include pre-K. And so that's what your state foundation funding is based upon. And and one thing on the dark store, just wanted, so basically, I think we said assessed rate may change, but it's basically the assessed there fighting against assessed value of the store. So they want the value of the store to be as if it was totally empty. And if it was going to market like Walmart stores typically have stipulations once they move out. So the value typically is decreased. So that's what they're pretty much arguing to get a less of a assessed value out there.
I I appreciate Mr. Mackey's question about what was the good news again? And I do want to share that. He brought that up, I think, at a private
Good news, that funding may increase.
The funding will increase. And I want to kind of go back to that in that when the state determined to it looks like they're moving towards improving our adequacy review. It it will, that that number that Mr. Bailey said about how much you get per student as an example, how much we get for certain populations such as our ESL students, English Second Language, or our students that are in in, you know, kind of a trying to kind of recover, they're they're in a high-risk groups. We can get some additional funding there. So that is the the there is a positive bit there for us all to keep watching tabs on as well. Okay, now, we know this is complex and and you just, you know, one of the things is the sheets that that Mr. Bailey shared will all be provided as a part of a delivery to you again tomorrow, so that you'll have those. If anybody has individual questions, don't hesitate to reach out to the to either any of us, and we will try to address that. And then also know that Mr. Bailey is exactly correct. And we've talked about this in one-on-one conversations with me with you all, is that we're gonna need to do some retreat-type work. And retreat retreat-type work is not only about governance, but it's also gonna be about building up some of your 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 understanding of our budget because it is a complex beast and 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 it's not easy for anybody to understand. So before I move on, I saw one more chat come in from Mr. Coleman, who says, who oversees the outreach? And I'm not sure, Mr. Coleman, you may have to unmute yourself because I don't know if I understand that question.
I think Dr. McKissick probably can answer that as well. She has a parent involved in it and some outreach with her.
If that's what he means, yeah, that would be ideal.
Right. I'm speaking specifically towards the outreach of the children of the the numbers that are down.
Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And and so, you know, again, we we try to take that on 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 a variety of different ways, whether that is our our teachers interacting with students that aren't showing up on their their Zooms or their their virtual learning. It's our attendance corps calling on a regular basis. It's us sending out messages on by school, by district to folks who have not engaged. Anything else to add on that, Dr. Oa?
Just the, like you suggested, the recruitment, but we also host virtual tours in light of the pandemic. And so the Check Us Out campaign that all schools are doing locally. And and I know that the fine arts team under the direction of Dr. Fletcher, even though we're not doing Artistry of the Rock, but they are looking how we can virtually showcase the magnet programs and all the fine arts programs that the students to also attract, recruit additional students. I know with early childhood, Mrs. Jones, the director has been reaching out to all the parents and all as well as the early childhood coordinators have been reaching out to them, staying in contact with them. And so it's just a lot of individual follow-up and contacting to make sure that parents know what procedures that we have in place. A lot of the coordinators feel like that is because just the pandemic, what we're dealing with could attribute to some of the low numbers.
And we're gonna go ahead and move us to the next topic just to keep our meeting moving. And and that is going to be with Dr. McKissick, who is the director of our federal programs. And again, really a very talented lady. It's really an honor to work with her because she's not only good at the detail aspects of her job, but is excellent at at outreach with her and her team in terms of programming that really supports our students. That's everything from, you know, finding ways to get devices in the hands of of parents, this is before the pandemic, to parent recruiting classes, to then supporting the needs of individual buildings. So, Dr. McKissick, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Poor. Can you hear me okay, everybody? All right, great. All right, well, I'm going to share my part of the budget or the federal programs part and some of the categorical funds. It's not a lot when you compare it to what Mr. Bailey just shared with you. But it is critical because these programs really support the various programs, educational programs and activities that go on in our schools. As Mr. As Mr. Bailey stated, much of the big budget goes towards salaries. So this small piece really does support the various programs that we have at the district level and in every school. So we have several different funds that I'd like to just share with you very briefly about and what they are and how much we typically receive. Title one, Part A, federal program. We are a high-poverty district pretty much. Most of our schools are have at least forty percent poverty in each one of them. So Title One funds are for disadvantaged students. If you go back one, Mr. Dr. Oa, please. We have Title One, Part A. We have Title Two, Part A. That that fund is for training our leaders and teachers and for recruitment. That's a a wonderful budget for those things. And it can also support class size reduction. Title Three, we mentioned it earlier. It deals with our English language learners. And we know that once those students are able to overcome that barrier, they become outstanding students. We have Title Four, which is a student, it's it's focused on student support structures. And we'll go more in-depth. You may have heard from the City of Little Rock and the Little Rock School District four positions called community coordinators. And that Title Four supports those positions in particular. Title Four B is special education. And then the last three funds are your categorical funds or state funds. Now, on the initial page, and you don't have to go back, Dr. Oa, but there is a link there, and that link is for school funding. It has been in existence, I think, now for two years. But it is an awesome, awesome link on the State Department's website. Because in it, you can actually click on the link, and then it'll take you to a listing of all of the districts. And anything you want to know about the funding as it relates to that section is right there. It just shows you all the possible funds. Now, you have to click on it to see if our district participates or receives it. But it is an excellent, excellent resource. So you can see the different funding amounts that we have there. And the 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 most the biggest fund, of course, is the ESA fund. It's a state categorical fund. It's fifteen million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred five dol- eight hundred and five dollars. Now, again, that particular budget supports our preschool programs. It supports a lot of salaries. But it also impacts programming. So it's a wonderful, wonderful support structure in our in our in our district. You can go to the next one, Dr. Oa. I believe the next one deals with Title One, Part A. I won't read it to you, but the only thing on this slide that I need to make you aware of is that equitable services, when we talk about federal funds, not our categorical or state funds, but when we talk about federal funds, we must be prepared to share these funds with the private schools or non-public schools that want to participate. By law, they have that right. And we send out an affirmation of consultation every year to all of the non-public schools in our areas. And we have to all of the non-public schools in our areas. And we have six, I think, that are currently participating. So they have access to, they can access Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, and so on. Next. Most of our schools that have received a Title One allocation, and we take the Title One budget that you saw on the second slide that we addressed and don't, you don't have to go back. We simply look at what it really takes to support each of those schools. But we have a per pupil amount that we share with each school. So all of our schools currently are school-wide programs. And that simply means that these funds go into the entire building for every student, every staff. It supports parents. It supports all aspects of that school using those funds. Last year, we had one targeted assisted program. And with those particular programs, you have to account for, you can only serve a, a, a small number of the students or the students who are most at risk of failing. And those students have to be rank ordered in order to receive support. You can only support the teachers that are supporting those students. So targeted assisted programs are a little bit different, but we are often asked to begin a school with a targeted assisted program before they transition to a school-wide program. And in order to be school-wide in the Little Rock School District, a, a school must have a poverty rate, rate of at least forty percent. It's not a huge compliance piece with the school-wide program. All of our schools are creating comprehensive needs assessments. All of our students have school improvement plans. And we will review whether or not those plans have hit their mark. So it's a, what, again, federal programs and in particular Title One, it really does provide support. One quick note, too, if a school district receives more than five hundred thousand dollars in Title, and in, in Title One annually, then that particular district must set aside, must set aside funds for parent engagement. And we set them aside based on school, based on the number of students in that school. So we have to set aside one percent of our annual budget and ninety percent of that one percent is sent out to or distributed to all of our school-wide programs. Next slide, Dr. Oa. Those are, those, those are the elementary academies or schools that are Title One. And as you, if you look very closely, there are only two elementary school, three elementary schools that are not included there. The elementary schools that are not Title One are Don Roberts, Forest Park, and Jefferson. And I will tell you that Don Roberts was a Title One school, but the poverty rate significantly reduced. And so they're no longer a Title One school. The next slide, I believe, has our middle and high schools. All of our middle schools are Title One schools. And the only high school that's not Title One is Little Rock West School of Innovation. And their poverty level is fairly high, but they did not meet the threshold for Title One status. Next slide, please. Again, Title Two A, preparing and recruiting high-quality educators and leaders. Those are the specific things that it addresses. And we're looking, Title Two A really wants us to focus on equity. We want to make sure that teachers who are in high-poverty schools are receiving the kind of support that they need in order to make sure that all the students are able to reach their best or, or so that they will not struggle as much. So we want to make sure we have really strong teachers in those particular schools. But it serves all of our teachers in the Little Rock School District. Next slide, please. Title Three, language acquisition, language enhancement, and academic achievement. There are at least eight parts to this. And in every one of them, the focus is making sure that we have structures in place to assist all of those students who are language, who need to be language proficient, make sure that they reach that proficiency level. Dr. Karen Henry manages the Title Three Fund and along with the categorical fund, ELL. Next slide, please. Title Four, wonderful fund. Currently, we were able, this is a fund that provides multiple things. And, and initially, the focus was in three areas, safe schools, technology, and innovative programs, I believe. But we have, but with it, we're given the opportunity as a district to make decisions based on our own needs assessment. And this year, given the pivots or given that, when we have to make sure to, when we want, we want to be a one-to-one school. And this particular fund will help us get there. Title Four also supports our Twenty-First Century Programs. We have eight, I believe. And that's a significant grant for the various schools that it supports. We have both elementary, middle level, and high schools that are part of the Twenty-First Century Program. I think, I think the next or maybe the last slide deals with categorical funds or state funds. Those are the four that we have. And they are all significant. They support the alternative learning environment. It supports our alternative learning school, alternative learning programs. And we have multiple. We have elementary, middle level, and high programs. The English language, language learners, it's the state categorical fund that supports language proficiency. Then the ESA categorical fund, as we discussed earlier, it is heavy with salaries. But again, it supports multiple programs. It supports some of our instructional facilitators that go to each of the schools. It also supports our reading specialists at the elementary and the middle level. So it, it's just a great asset for the district to have that. And then our professional development fund, it's utilized so that we can continue to be, I, I believe, on the cutting edge of preparing teachers to assist with making sure that none of our students are at risk. I believe that's the end of mine. And I'm, well, you know, if you have a question or if there's something that wasn't particularly clear, I'd be happy to, to answer.
Dr. McKissick, I'll start and just capturing some of the things within the chat. One of the things that we could probably create a little bit of clarity is, you know, we have such differences in all of our schools. Some are high poverty, but some are even have more challenges than others. So how do we know and who gets more money? And is it true that, that Central gets everything? You know, sometimes, I'm sure board members have heard that, that Central has all the money. Well, how do you, how do we look at, at funding? And how does that actually get developed through your, your team?
Okay, so we do it on a per pupil basis. So we look at the poverty rate in each of those schools. And let's just say, this year, I believe my per pupil amount is five hundred and ninety dollars. And with that, I look at how many students are identified as high poverty based on the school lunch count, based on the direct certification count. So we have the number of students that are considered high poverty in that one school. So we multiply that particular number by the per pupil. That is how you get the allocation. So a school then makes the decision, well, then how am I going to spend those funds? And they may decide, well, we need an extra facilitator in our building. So we'd like to take a portion of our funding and pay for an extra literacy facilitator or pay for a technology facilitator. So it's really up to the needs assessment in that building, how they're going to budget and spend those funds. But to allocate them to the building, we simply look at their poverty and the amount that we have per pupil. And no, Central doesn't get everything for, they don't get it all.
So the higher the percentage of students that are on free and reduced lunch, then that lends itself to receiving more funds. And then you look at your student enrollment. One of the things that, that Mr. Bailey produces for the board, and we typically kind of put this together in the spring as we start to work on a, a work session, is just, you know, what does it, what do we bring to each campus per student? And you'll be surprised when you see that report of the variance in terms of numbers based upon the free and reduced lunch number. So a school like Central compared to a school such as Hall, it'll be dramatically different in terms of how much additional funding that they get per student. Because we, that, that those schools that have higher needs receive higher dollar amounts.
Yes.
In, in, in the, the, going back to Central, just, or Mr. Bailey, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I believe Central might have been left off the slide as a high student.
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, they are, they are.
I missed it, I'm sorry. I got, I, I was a little late today.
We were talking about Central a lot. I don't want them to think Central is not a Title One school, but they are.
It is, yes.
One of the things about Central that many people don't understand, and I, I don't know if I have the numbers exactly right, but they have a large percentage of students that come from economically challenged families. So as we do throughout our district.
Central, well, Central has a lot of students. And their poverty is probably a forty-eight percent or forty-six percent. But they have a lot of students. So when you multiply that particular number of students by their per pupil, it seems to be a really large budget, but they handle it very well. They support their students very well with it. Little Rock Southwest has a much higher budget because they have a higher poverty rate than does Central in their new school.
So board candidates, additional questions? And we will start to open those questions up to anything that might be on your mind or that you're, you're, you're thinking about. And, and/or questions that deal with the federal programs.
I just want to chime in one more time to say, most of our federal programs are for supplemental and not, you have a supplement, not supplant, so they can't take the, the place of required positions and things. So you couldn't actually use Title One for a kindergarten teacher. You're required by the state to actually have, use that with operating. So it's basically on top of what you're required to do. So it's to supplement what you're currently doing or, or something you want to expand upon.
And Dr. McKissick, one of the things that, that I think might be of interest to this group is just with this, you know, when you receive an allocation from a federal fund, some of the restrictions or requirements beyond supplement, timing of how you spend the money and, and the paperwork involved with it. Can you give them just a little bit of a sense of that?
Well, with all of the federal funds, there are, we do not receive these funds freely, shall I say. So with every fund, there are significant things that we must understand. For instance, we have, we have to spend eighty-five percent of our Title One dollars in the first, in the first year. Even though we have twenty-seven months to actually spend it, we have to spend eighty-five percent of it in the first year. So that's one thing. So we, when we carry over, we can't just carry over all of our money or decide that we're going to keep it this year and just draw interest. That doesn't happen. So we have to be mindful of our, every date. Because as a school that's transitioning from state back to local control, we have to be mindful of every deadline. For instance, Octo-, August one, every school must have a school improvement plan that's on the website at the school and at the district. And if it is not, then we, we have missed the compliance piece. Every, at the end of June, we have to apply for these funds. And if we miss a date, we become a high priority school, which puts us in the place of being monitored more often by the state because we've missed deadlines. With every pull, you know, we have to have our, our budgets ready so that they can be, so that the state can reimburse us. So we have quite a bit of paperwork that goes with each of these. And when I, the, the one piece right now that's, that we're really kind of struggling with, CARES or ESER is also a federal fund. And the state had to put a pause on it because it was not allocated correctly to the private schools. So now we're in the process of sending out new information to all of those entities in order to move forward with what the state has requested of us. So it's just from the comprehensive needs assessment to everything that a school has to do, to a district has to do. It is a lot. I'll just stop there. But it's doable.
Thank you, Dr. McKissick. And this will actually, the next question kind of complements what you just shared. The, the schools that receive Title One funding, how do they make the decision-making, decision-making process? And you kind of just covered it just a tad, but break that down just a little bit more and how that group then interacts with you to get to a final number.
So two things. One, I'm, I'm, I'm really glad that Dr. Oa is in the district now and he can really assist with this process. But we have first a comprehensive needs assessment. That comprehensive needs assessment really is reflective of what does the law say about a school improvement plan? So we have to make sure that those things go hand in hand. So once a school decides what it is they're going to do, what it is they believe is their number one priority or what's next. So they lay out a plan of action. And we've tried to be more succinct with our plans, allowing schools to identify very clearly. We believe, in Mr. Poor's words, this will move the needle in our building. So we're going to focus on that. So they can do that with a comprehensive needs assessment. Now, our role as supporting them is, we have to say, how does this align with our district plan? Where are we with that? And then our job is to make sure, and this is normally done in a quarterly PLC with the principals and their teams, where we actually get together and we start to talk about, so how close are you to your goal at this time? Because there's an expectation. We don't expect for a school to look the same today as it will in thirty days. There should be something that's taking place every day to move them towards the needle, whatever that needle might be. But in conjunction with the executive directors, the curriculum and instruction, and with the deputy superintendent, Mr. Poor, just all of the central office team, we're here to support them. And I think, I'm, I'm sure that Dr. Oa might share this, but we have moved to a tiered support system. There are some schools that are really good at identifying what their needs are and going after it. Those schools do not need the same type of support as a school that has struggled over time with moving their students forward. So we have a different plan in place to provide support. But that, those things are connected. Local plans, the school plan, is connected to the district plan. The district then comes back to provide that support. So I hope I answered the question that you asked. I got a little excited about talking about it.
And Dr. McKissick, if I can add on to that, the district support plan aligns with our exit plan. And the exit plan is the criteria that we have to meet to be removed from Level Five intensive support. And so our goal this entire year was to make sure that all of our plans aligned and it all links back to the exit plan as we support each individual school in an equitable manner. So that it's not a one-size-fits-all. We're actually addressing the needs of our students at each particular school throughout the district.
Thank you.
Well, and I, I, maybe it's a really good place for us to stop and the, the chat has slowed down just a little bit. And I want to thank all of you for participating this evening. We appreciate the time that you're putting into learning more about our school district. This probably will be the last time that we all can formally wish you well as your campaign kind of comes to a close. It's kind of hard to believe that, you know, the, the election date coming in November is just right around the corner. I know that I believe next week, early voting starts, if I'm correct, on the fifteenth. And so I'm sure you'll want to remind and share that out to all of your, your constituents and the patrons that you're trying to get excited about, you know, participating in this election. And again, we thank you. I also want to thank our staff. And I know that there's been some really positive comments in the chat about the Little Rock School District staff. And, and I appreciate everyone. And and I appreciate everyone being, you know, thankful for the people that we have working for us. Dr. Oa, you want to have a final word?
Yes, sir, I have one more slide if I can share. It's with the important dates that are coming up. Can I share those right quick?
Sure. And and I forgot about this, Dr. Oa, so thank you for reminding me. Board members, potential board members, this is really important and remember, this will be shot to you. We, we actually had this prepared in combination of the State Department and Little Rock School District. Just, we think this is really important for you to see. Dr. Oa, any other comments on that?
No, just that I kind of abbreviated all the dates. Each date, excuse me, has additional information. So when you receive this document tomorrow morning, if you click on the link at the very bottom, you will get the detailed informational document that outlines each of these dates and the actual law or board policy that aligns with each of those dead deadlines.
And Ms. Nolan corrected me that early voting starts on the nineteenth. So I apologize that I misspoke on that. Thank you for that. I I hope everyone again has a a wonderful evening. And we will catch up with you in the very near future. Thank you so much.